Good evening, everybody. Pursuant to the public meetings at Chapter 231, public walls of 1975, this meeting goes to the Audrey Far Press on July 2, 2025. I had them fully advertising the Audrey Far Press issue of July 7, 2025. All of this will first come to township, the boroughs within the regional districts has been fully notified and requirements we are posting with next on July 2, 2025. Please join me. Mr. Guardi is going to do the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, from New Jersey and from Washington from New York, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Enjoy the board meeting.
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was pre-printed prior to the meeting, the board also discussed their exception number three, the student suspension report and the student discipline hearing review. For exception number seven, in addition to contract negotiations, the board discussed the settlement agreement that appears on tonight's agenda, as well as the Freehold Township Voice Soccer NJ SI Appeal. And finally, number eight, the board discussed the personnel matters as noted on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Is that it? May I have a motion to improve the minutes of the September 11, 2025 regular board meeting?
Motion second.
Second, slap.
Can you discuss the board? Do you have any discussion to go forward?
Mr. Escala.
Thank you.
Ms. Bruno. Ms. Capiello. Ms. Blutcher Park. Ms. Higley. Ms. Slavich.
Yes.
Ms. Pop.
Yes.
Ms. Messinger.
Yes.
Ms. Bruno.
Yes. Just a reminder, all communications are filed through the business administration office. Now, we're going to have Dr. Hazel's committee report.
Thank you, Ms. Burdo. This evening, we're going to start off with some special recognitions. Can you hear me? Some special recognitions. We had our district band festival on Tuesday evening. Our host school was Marlboro High School. Just want to congratulate all of our band members and our band directors. We also had our annual spectacular event in downtown Freehold. That entire event is worked on with our art teachers and all of our art students throughout the district. This is an annual event, but we have a special highlight, the brave cast at Manalupin High School. And I see our anchor is here this evening, who has interviewed me twice already this year, Aaron Chikorsky. If you could please stand. Aaron and his team, Michael Curz, who is a script producer. Patrick Wheeler, who is a producer, and Daniel Goldring is also a producer. And they are just a small team on behalf of so many students that are a part of this media program over at Manalupin High School under Mr. Girardi, who is a spectacular educator working with this fine group of students who are heavily involved with media and broadcasts. And that program is at Manalupin High School. To kick off our event tonight, we do have a video that we want to show, but I want to thank a few folks that are here. Each year at this event, I'm sure all of you know Federici's Pizza in downtown Freehold. They provide lunch for our entire staff and all of our students. We have the spectacular committee that sponsors and hosts this event. It's an annual event with our art teachers and our art supervisors who successfully prepare all of our students for this really hands-on experience where they can put all their artistic abilities to work. And I would stress to everyone here to take a ride down Main Street and be able to see their work displayed on all of the windows in downtown Freehold. Having Mr. Mendez, you may need to move some of the board members, but I want to be able to show that broadcast from an elephant high school brave cast. Are we ready for that? Okay. So is the string coming down a little bit more? Perfect.
Hey, boys. Aaron Chikorsky here in downtown Freehold for the annual spectacular window painting contest. In this contest, students from all six FRHSD schools will be participating in creating Halloween-inspired artwork for windows for local community shops. And throughout the day, my team and I will be checking in with our brave artists to see how their artwork is going. For those who don't know, what is some more information that you can tell us about this contest and what it is?
Well, this is a great way for the students to show off their art skills. It's been going on in Freehold since 1948. Our teacher named Mrs. Hopeleton that started it has been going every year since, and it takes, it encompasses a whole area. It's just a great day for the kids to show off the talent people of Freehold. They love coming out. They're going to be riding around tomorrow looking at the pictures. It's just a lot of fun.
So what has been your favorite part of today?
Hanging out with everybody, and I like being able to come here and do this. It's a really good opportunity. This is my third year doing it, and I have to say every year, it's just really fun seeing how everyone improves and the different designs that everyone does. And just, you know, painting is fun, too.
Well, this is my first year here, and I just love helping mixing all the colors together.
Taking my design from paper and putting it onto the window and also seeing the creative things that other people have come up with.
I feel like it'd be the experience and painting the windows and just seeing, like you said, everything that everyone's coming up with. It's just really amazing to see people's creative liberties and what they're able to do.
But what's been your biggest challenge so far in this event?
I think the biggest challenge so far has definitely been the cold because it's freezing out today. It's hard to work, and my hands are shaking. Reaching the top of the window, there's a lot of alternate things that we have to do. We have to do trees at the top that are poking out this way, and then his antlers are going to be coming for the top, and then they go to the sides. So I'm going to have to, like, reach really high.
It's honestly been the same challenge where we're both not the tallest people, and we have to add text to the back rim of it that to be able to make it fit, we'd have to reach near the top.
The details on the face were extremely challenging, having to do the shading, getting the colors. It was so difficult. I had to, like, redo it like six times.
We had to make sure that the colors were accurate and that the shading was accurate. And I would also say the comb was pretty hard.
As a local business owner, how has this spectacular event contributed to this community?
What I like best about it, it brings the school, it brings the businesses, it brings the teachers, it brings the whole community together. And on this day, we fed 190 people pizzas for lunch today, and it's probably my favorite event that is done here in the Freehold Borough.
We just opened in June, but we've been residents of the borough for about 13 years. It's always just a fun way to bring in students and get some art in town. We don't have a lot of murals in place, so this is just a fun activation that everyone gets to enjoy.
We always admire the art, but it's so cool to have the Talking Dance themed art on our windows, so definitely come by and check it out.
Do you feel senior students compete in such a wonderful event?
I feel great. I think it's an awesome opportunity that the Chamber of Commerce boards us every year. They invite us down to paint on the windows. It's a great opportunity for the kids to get out of school and be able to paint on such a big scale, and they are making experiences that they'll remember for the rest of their lives.
Oh, it's just wonderful. Well, I want to see the students compete in the school-wide competition and then coming out and then, you know, giving to the community, showcasing your art or skills, representing Manalupin.
Spectacular has been going on for 50 or 60 years at this point, and there's a real tradition of students in the Freehold Regional High School District coming out, working together. Again, I love when all schools are represented. We've got all six high schools represented here, and you get to see our kids leaning into things they care about. This is a great event. It's a beautiful day, and I'm really proud of them for what they're doing.
Why are opportunities like this so important for our school community?
So I think the spectacular brings the best of both worlds together. We have our students from the Freehold Regional High School District, obviously Manalupin High School, and the local downtown in Freehold. So this really allows our students to showcase their talents, their artwork in a space that's not just a...
We'll finish it off. Sorry about that.
I think I was going to say something to the effect of this, you know, community event really allows our students to shine and it brings everybody together, right? Our talented students, our businesses, and all our community members. So like they said, it's been going on 50, 60 years. Really shows you what this community is about.
And board members and Dr. Hazel, do you want to remain seated and we can jump right into our spectacular recognition? So I'd like to call out members of the spectacular committee. This is Maureen Stumpf. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maureen Stumpf, and I'm the chairperson of the Midopinion. I will say I may be slightly emotional, I last, my last letter is a senior, so that would be a little... On behalf of the Halloween's spectacular committee and our co-chair, Annette Jordan and Judy Guy, I would like to also thank Dr. Hazel and the Board of Education for their continued support of all our events. We begin planning this event in July, and it's definitely a team effort, and if you just give me a few moments, I would like to thank everyone in all of you. Without them and you, all of this, excuse me, this event may not be successful as you would have hoped. First, the teachers of every high school in the Freehold Intermediate School get their windows signed next to the beginning of the year. They go on their own time and measure the notes for the students, help them with their drawings, and then happily show up the day of the event. You are all amazing, and I am truly appreciative of all the work you have done. Mike Federici of Federici's Restaurant in Freehold, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, has been our sponsor for many years. He doesn't question it. I give him a D. The staff is wonderful. I don't know how they make so many pizzas in a couple hours, but it's happening. We are so grateful to him for his continued support. I also want to thank Freehold PDW, as well as the Fire and Police Conference for all they do for our event. I want to thank every business downtown that participated. We had 10 new businesses this year, and they are all so excited when the students arrive. I have already had many phone calls about how wonderful these are and how happy they are. Our volunteer judges have the daunting task of choosing to win, who wins, and all of them had a tough time this year. Jeff Freeman, Lynn Reich, and Leslie Bailey, and you for judging on 78 windows and getting me your winners so quick. Now, I would like to call out Rebecca Polycash and Annette Piazza. Come on. Rebecca's up, so should I come after?
I'll come down.
Rebecca is the district's communications and project coordinator. Thank you for capturing the students' artistry with your photos and doing tonight's slideshow. I will present the flowers, and you will get them after. Annette and I touch base on August, and she then coordinates all of the information given to our teachers in early September. She is always there for any questions I have and makes sure we have what we need for tonight's ceremony. She is also there at the day of the event, and I am grateful for all of her hard work to make this event and our parade on the 26th a success. We got Annette Jordan to come up and help with the presentation of awards. I also want to let everyone know we also have a picture of 1948, which is when this started. Anybody who wanted to see it will be here. It's just something really cool, you know, that has been going on for so long. And some of our committee members, you can't hear me? Is that my too far? I'm sorry. So this picture is from 1948. Some of our committee members have been on the committee ever since, so you just have to come up with them. All right. Let's get to the awards. So we had four honorable mentions this year. First was Freehold High School principal is Mr. James Brown. The painting is Like Grandfather, Like Grandson. And the teachers are Dan Finalde, Jenny Mizetta, and Jean Kumbagat. I apologize by interrupting the names. Okay, next is Freehold High School as well. Principal Jane, Mr. James Brown. It's called The Us Movie. Maria Garcia and Alfredo Ramirez are artists. The township, physical doctor, and research associate. Call up Richard Keller at Edgast's Barbershop. The student is Parker, Shabon, and Alexis Peck. Teachers are Max Boyl and Andrew Sharp. Our last honorable mention is Howell High School, principal Dr. Jeremy Raiverman. It is the puppy pocket patch. It's odd to me, this was one of my favorite. The student is Julian Dietrich. She's not able to attend, and that's her, her teacher or principal wants to come up and take it. Okay, now, our third place is Marlboro High School. Principal Dr. David Leighton is called Hot Rod Room on Artists. The student is Olivia Akashka. She's not able to attend, so again. Okay, second place is Howell High School. Principal Dr. Jeremy Raiverman had the painted witch dogs. This was also one of my favorites. It's at South Street and Brothers. The student is Angelina Mai. Sorry. She's also not able to attend. Do you want to come up? Also, that first place. This painting is amazing. It is at T-Mobile. It's psycho. Again, we have a picture up here. It is truly incredible. The teachers are Hallie Ware and Sarah Materio. And assistant principal and art supervisor is Mr. Krech. Okay, so that's it. I want to thank every business downtown for this help. I'm sorry. I want to thank the board for inviting us here tonight. Congratulations to all of our winners. I love this event. It's a lot of work to clean up in a number of different parts, but it truly is just spectacular. You guys have to go get one of those one for us. So thanks, everybody, for coming.
I just want to congratulate all of our artists. Outstanding work you can see here, and if you could have a round of applause for our and then thank you to the spectacular committee. As they said, they start their work in August preparing for this event. July, okay? July, here we go. And are in communication with the school district every step of the way to organize this, to get the students to the downtown area, to make sure that they are prepared for the size of their windows, and actually working through what they want to, you know, present and paint on all of these windows. So a lot of preparation goes into it, and we are just so excited that we can be a part of this in the Freehold downtown area. But on the school district's part, the one gal who makes this all happen for us is Annette Piazza, who is at the district office. She has been doing this and working with this team for over 20 years, and I just want to thank her for her hard work, her dedication, doing all of the logistics for the school district, working through all of the paperwork and the bulletin that goes out. So Annette Piazza, would you please come up? We have some important... I know you put a lot of hard and soul into this, the working with our students and our teachers and the downtown area, and are just such a dedicated employee to this school district, and we really appreciate all that you do. Ms. Piazza works in the human resources department, but always wants to have that connection to our students, to our teachers, and the community, and this is so important for her each year to really have that connection with our schools. So I just want to thank you. Don't cry. We need you to do this over and over and over again, everybody. So congratulations. We have a terrific team. So for all of our students out there, a lot goes on behind the scenes, and these are all the dedicated employees, teachers, and staff that really make everything happen. So thank you, Ms. Piazza, for all of your service.
Members of the board and administration, you can head up on stage.
I'm going to continue with the superintendent's report. I hope all of you can hear me. Their waves could raise that a little bit. Is this one better?
Yes.
To our community and folks that are here, we recently learned of anti-Semitic Snapchat messages by students in our district. I want to be clear, antisemitism and hate have no place in the Freehold Regional High School District. We have taken action in accordance with our board policies and regulations, the New Jersey Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination, and we have worked in accordance with law enforcement pursuant to our memorandum of agreement. While student confidentiality laws prevent us from sharing specific disciplinary details, we are committed to ensuring accountability and making sure that every member of our school community feels safe and supported. Hate to the level of what appeared in those messages is not created in a vacuum and is not solely created in school, especially in less than five weeks. Rather, it is developed over time, and to effectively combat it requires more than just consequences. It demands education. We are proud in this district of our longstanding partnerships and programs that have taught and will continue to teach our students about the dangers of hatred and the lessons of the past, especially the Holocaust. We value our community partners, our parents, and we will continue to build relationships with groups and organizations to strengthen our proactive approach to both combat and address antisemitism and all forms of hate in a manner that brings true understanding for our students. I want to thank and share some of our community partners that we have worked with. I think it's important for the community and for the Freehold Regional High School District parent community to know who we are working with. We work with Ms. Brianna Doherty. She's the acting executive director of the Commission of Holocaust Education in New Jersey. Ms. Wendy Tepper from Third Generation... Ms. Wendy Tepper from Third Generation New Jersey. Dr. Stacy Gallin, the Director of Karma, the Center to Combat Antisemitism and Reinforce Multicultural Acceptance. Ms. Susan Antman, the Executive Director of the Jewish Federation in the Heart of New Jersey. Detective Dave D'Amico, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Mikey Fallon, who facilitates anti-bias and anti-hate programs in our schools. We facilitate a number of programs for our students in the schools. We have our students right here. They attend twice yearly grade level class meetings where our administrators address expectations. We outline the code of conduct. We talk about inclusion. We demand and expect of them respect. We just finished with our Week of Respect activities in our schools from October 7th to the 11th. Holocaust survivor speakers and presentations from the Third Generation of New Jersey. We have brought into our school district the Hate Ends Now Program, which is a Holocaust education program where the students go through a museum exhibit and also through the cattle car experience. We had that program last year at Colson High School, and we look to have it again during this school year. In our schools, we have Holocaust Remembrance Day messages and broadcasts. Actually, Manalupin High School, the student news program that you saw their edition of, they put that together for us. There's anti-bias and anti-hate assemblies led in our schools and No Place for Hate programs. We are a district committed to the education of our students. I always stress to my staff, we are a district as the regional about relationships, engagement and growth. Our students deserve an environment where they can learn, grow and thrive without fear, bias or intimidation. We will, as a district, stand firm and act decisively against hatred in all of its forms and remain dedicated to fostering a truly inclusive environment for each and every student in this school district. I have a lengthy, we have some other reports to go through. I didn't know if our board wanted to share anything on that matter, but I do have a student that wants to speak this evening as well. Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Bruno is our Manalupin Board of Education representative.
The Freehold Regional High School District and all of its high schools unequivocally condemn antisemitism and all forms of hate. We are aware of the antisemitic host feed outside of school by some students and are addressing this matter with the utmost seriousness through a thorough investigation in accordance with the district's code of conduct, New Jersey's Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, the HIV requirements and coordination with law enforcement. While confidentiality walls prevent us from sharing specific information, we are taking immediate and decisive action. As a lifelong resident of Manalupin, a mother of three who also went through Manalupin, I am deeply disappointed by what has transpired. However, I have the utmost confidence in our administrative team to do right by all parties involved. We must also take this moment to educate all parties and recognize that education and understanding are essential to preventing hate in any form. Our district remains steadfast in promoting respect, inclusion and education through ongoing anti-bias and Holocaust education in partnerships with local Jewish community organizations. Counseling and support services are available to ensure all students feel safe, supported and welcome. Antisemitism and hate of any kind have no place in our schools, and we remain committed to fostering a community built on understanding, compassion and unity. Thank you.
I also need to acknowledge another friend of the Freehold Regional High School District community, Mr. Dan Rosette, who is the Director of the Jewish Federation. I failed to mention him when I was going through my comments, but he is a friend of the Freehold Regional High School District and helps us with much of our programming. But I want to turn the microphone over to one of the students that serves on my executive student cabinet. I meet with a group of six seniors that have been selected and have interviewed for this position with their building principal. They serve on the superintendent's executive cabinet. I meet with this group on a monthly basis, and they assist, they share insights with me about their experience, one in their senior year, which is a very busy year, but really step myself and the administration through their experience in the Freehold Regional High School District, all aspects of their educational program. And I feel that is vital for us to be able to have great, we need the students firsthand experience that helps complement the work of our district, our strategic plan and the work of the school district. And they are just an extremely talented group of students that work with me on a monthly basis. And this evening, representing Freehold High School, is Colton Turner. So
To reiterate a little, the executive student cabinet is composed of six senior representatives, one carefully selected from each school in our district. We function as a cohesive team, meeting monthly with Dr. Niesel, Dr. Howell and the Central Office of Administrators to form a student focus group. Our primary role is to advocate the interests and perspectives of our fellow students. Each member of our cabinet brings a unique voice to the table, showing valuable and sensible for real-world schools. As we look ahead to the 2025, as we look ahead to the 2025-2026 school year, I'd like to share how our district's programs have shaped my educational journey. One of the greatest strengths of our high schools is their small learning communities, including magnet and halfway programs. These communities do normally provide career exploration. They create meaningful connections. You see the same faces in virtual classes, building relationships with peers who share your interests and aspirations. You develop bonds with teachers who understand your goals and can help guide you accordingly. Your sense of the world transforms education from something you attend to a community year party. At Freehold Borough High School, students can choose from the Medical Science and Medical Program, the Computer Science and Medical Program, the Web Design Pathway and the Health Professions Pathway Program. These programs allow students to explore careers before committing to a profession. With a strong interest in health care, I chose the Health Professions Pathway Program. HPPP introduced me to a variety of pre-healthcare classes such as Medical Technology and Emergency Care. In these classes, our teacher focuses on open discussion. His connections from lessons in class and his experiences enable me to see real-world implications for well-being. Additionally, HPP's partnership with Central State's healthcare system offers students a remarkable opportunity to train as patient transporters, a chance I eagerly pursue to gain a genuine clinical experience. After interviewing and being accepted, I began working. I soon realized that my coursework had, in many ways, prepared me for this role even if it was the director. For example, in medical technology, I learned how professionals speak in a healthcare setting, which helped me communicate clearly with nurses and technicians. Emergency critical care taught me patient safety, infection control, and why some people may need medical care. Working at Central State opened my eyes to the challenges people face with a map and most vulnerable. Simple acts like offering a blanket or listening for a moment showed me how much compassion matters. This experience not only connected my lovely class to the real world, but also deepened my understanding of community. It reminded me that while medicine is built on science, sometimes it's little interactions that we add in the mix. I will surely carry this with me in my future aspirations and career goals. I will forever be grateful for opportunities that I had at my time at Freehold Borough. I know that our programs and courses will continue to prepare all of our students for the future as a district. Thank you.
I appreciate you sharing your experience, but sharing what our district has to offer in terms of our magnet programs and career pathway programs for students. So thank you so much. Few more items. Our District Professional Development Day was on Monday, October 13th. That was a day that our staff comes together across the district to engage in professional development activities to further enhance their craft and their expertise. And we have a number of educational and professional development activities that our teachers and support staff and counselors engage in around the teaching and learning process and advancing our goals of the district. I wanted to inform the board and also the public that we are going to have changes to our 25-26 district calendar. Wednesday, November 5th, will be an early dismissal. We will have NJGPA and NJSLA field testing. They are making some changes to the state assessments, so they are field testing. Looks to be that we will have an adaptive test coming for the March administration. Speaking of the March administration for NJGPA, which is the graduation requirement that students take in their junior year of high school, Tuesday, March 17th through Friday, March 20th, on those state testing days will be early dismissal sessions for students. Thursday, June 18th will also be an early dismissal session, and that's right around the time of our final examinations. Our district is, we will send a communication of those calendar changes to all of our parents. We are pleased to inform our Board of Education and the district that we have satisfied at least 80% on the weighted indicators in each of the five areas of New Jersey CUSAC, and we are deemed as a high-performing district. CUSAC stands for New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. That is a backbone. Basically, it is a monitoring by the New Jersey Department of Education. It's a monitoring and evaluation system for public school districts. This occurred in March of 25 of this last school year. They conduct a comprehensive review of our, of our system. It's in the areas of Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations and Personnel, to determine the extent to which the school district is providing a thorough and efficient education. Our placement results for CUSAC are as follows: Instruction and Program 81, Fiscal Management 96, Governance 95, Operations 98, and 100% in Personnel. So we are very pleased with those findings. This evening, we also want to present our annual testing report. This is NJSLA and VLM. At our last meeting, prior meeting, we presented the public with our GPA results. This is NJSLA. This is not the graduation retirement test, but a very important test to measure the progress of our students in their academic subject areas. So we're going to have that report.
How about public comments?
It's coming.
Because we're all here, we're waiting.
Yes, this, yeah, it's a regularly scheduled board meeting, so we have to finish our business. We are almost through. So we are going to have that, you know, report now.
Good evening. All right, if we're ready, I'd like to go through our results of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment and the dynamic working out results. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment is a federal requirement. As a contingency of receiving federal funding, they require that annually we assess students in math, ELA, and science. The grades spans that get assessed in those are typically grades three, five and in high school. So we'll have a range of students taking the assessments. For science, we typically have 11th grade students take the science assessment, 9th grade students take the ELA assessment, and then math will, the test of note is Algebra 1. However, every student must assess math in high school, so if students took Algebra 1 in middle school, they will then take one of the other math courses that are available. We do use these results for a variety of purposes. Specifically, we use them to adjust our approaches to student interventions, improve student, excuse me, improve professional development, and also make enhancements to our curriculum. As I mentioned, only grade nine students will take the ELA assessment, and only grade 11 students will take the science, and then with math, typically, students in grade 10 will take Algebra. Our sequence in Real Rational is Geometry and Algebra. With these assessments, proficiency levels are considered levels four and five. So if a student scores at those levels, they would be considered proficient, and the grades that will be shown today are the average of those students who scored at that level four. Up here, we have our performance in grade nine ELA. We can see that our performance was at 51.7% compared to the state at 49.9%. The proficiency rates in ELA will approach 9% in their junior year based on NJGPA performance. What you're looking at now is our subgroup performance. One thing of note with these subgroup performances is that we do continue to provide reading and writing-based student supports based on our, focused on our subgroup populations through extended day and extended year programs. Next up, we have our performance on Algebra 1. It's critical to understand that our Algebra 1 NJSLA results represent a fundamentally different student population than the state average. With 35% of our students completing Algebra 1 in middle school, those advanced learners are not included in our high school Algebra 1 testing pool. They are already taking Geometry or higher level courses. For additional context, in spring 2025, when all juniors were required to take the NJGPA in math, an assessment based in large part on Algebra 1 skills, our students scored at a 75.3% proficiency rate compared to the state average of 58%. We will also continue to provide math-based student supports among our subgroup populations through extended day and extended year learning opportunities. Next up, we have our geometry performance. More students are meeting expectations than the state. We're at 59.4%, whereas the state was at 56%. We're at 59.4%, whereas the state was at 56%, by difference of 3.4 points. One thing to note is that we have exceptionally few students at risk. Only 5.9% of our students scored at Level One and Level Two. Statewide, the levels one and two total was 15.9%, so we're about 10% better in that As with Algebra One students, we will also continue to provide math-based student supports among our subgroup populations through extended day and extended year learning opportunities. Scores for certain subgroups are suppressed when there are fewer than 20 student results. Next up, we have our comparison of the Algebra Two percentages. Students taking Algebra Two NJSLA represent only about 8% of the students who were assessed in math in spring 2025, with the majority being grade nine students. So these would be students who took both Algebra One and Geometry in middle school. Algebra Two's rigor is reflected in the very strong performance of Level Three and above for our students. With such a small testing population, we do have suppression of subgroup performance for those students. Next up, we're going to have our science results. Science proficiency is considered levels three and four. Students scoring that range are considered proficient, and the rates we'll be showing represent those students. Here, we're seeing that we're edging the state in overall proficiency and have far fewer students in the lowest level. With so many clustered at Level Two and a stronger-than-average Level Three, we're well positioned to convert near proficient students' proficiency this year. As with math and ELA, targeted interventions are available to support students who struggle in their science course. Next, I want to provide some additional context. The spring NJSLA results provide one-schnaps snapshot of student performance in time. For a more complete understanding of what our students know and can do, we also need to examine some of the other assessments in which our students participate. This slide shows our performance over two years on the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. This is a mandatory assessment that all grade 11 students take. This is a state-required assessment compared to the NJSLA, which is federally required. What we can see here, though, is we have exceptionally high performance in ELA and math. We had an exceptional leap in the past year, getting up to 75.3%. These rates show that we have strong, that both these assessments outperform the state, and it shows a more accurate picture of what our students know and can do by the time they reach grade nine. Next up, we have our AP performance. In 2025, nearly three-quarters of our students scored three or above. Three is the cutoff for being able to earn college credit, colleges that accept those scores, so that's our benchmark measure. However, in New Jersey's performance in 2024, only about less than a third of the students scored at that level. So we can see we have very strong access, we have a very strong support model, and we keep it standing and improving. One thing I want to note is that we do not gatekeep students from taking AP course work. If students are interested in an honors track, they're allowed to attend that, they're closely monitored, and then they're certainly allowed to participate in AP program. This additional student performance data clearly shows that the longer students are with us, the stronger their performance will be in later grades. Next up, we have our dynamic learning maps results. This is the alternate assessment for students with significant disabilities. Typically, about 1% of our students are enrolled in the DLM assessments. This data informs precise IEP aligned restructuring. So much of science, levels three and four are considered proficient. Students, DLM performance is also included in our overall ESAA accountability measures. Students participating in the DLM assessment have similar proficiency rates to our students who take the NJGPA and the NJSLA science. Though 2024, 2025 statewide results are not yet available, in 2022, 23, 24, grade 11 DLM students have the following proficiency. Statewide, 36% of students were proficient in both ELA and math, and 25% were proficient in science. Comparatively, our students performed significantly better than the statewide averages. Finally, again, as I mentioned earlier, we use the results from these assessments to drive our intervention strategies, and our model is to scale proven practices to lift our near proficient students over the future. Thank you very much, and that's it.
Almost at the public participation, we just have one committee report. Mr. Messenger? No, let's just do the student finance, and we're going to go right into public participation.
Okay, I'm going to make this as quick as possible. This district is in the thick of forming the budget plan for the next five years with the plan of spending $12 million a year on facilities and infrastructure. And when you build out a five-year plan, it obviously takes a lot of planning, involvement with architects and engineers, and just so the public knows, over the next five years, the number one priority are the boilers in the schools, water treatment plan in Cold Snack, chillers for AC down the road maybe, roofing and paving. So basically, tonight's agenda does include approval of a construction management company to help guide the district on these stages of construction to make sure everything is developed and finalized in a safe and efficient manner. Oh, and then after the discussion about these items, we also talked about things that are going to be happening in the summer of 2026, such as roofing, paving, and athletic facilities. And then towards the end of the report, we saw the wish list that each school submitted, each principal submits what they think are the most, most important infrastructure needs of each building, and each of these has to be thoroughly investigated in addition, you know, just to see if they're necessary and helpful or not. And then, basically, that is really the most important thing. The one thing that my colleague Diana did bring up with respect to the construction company that we are approving tonight is really to make it abundantly clear that they are able to handle such a project. Because if we're going to pay a construction management company, obviously, we need to know they have the capacity to handle projects that are involved in six high schools, and that's essentially the big overview of finance committee meeting.
Thank you, Mike. We're going to go to Mr. Verna. Any changes to the agenda you wish to note?
Yes, Ms. Verna, we do have one change. There's a walk-in item in the back as it relates to a topic that was discussed in the record session.
Thank you.
And that, I'm sorry, that would be J22, sorry.
J22? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go into public participation. I'm trying to read some of these hand writings. Rabbi Michael Potts. Rabbi?
And just, there's a sheet in the back with performance protocols for public comment, just real quick. The board has set aside an hour tonight for public comment. We assign each speaker limited their time to three minutes. I'll keep the time. If we get close, I'll just kind of wave and issue just to wrap up your topic and try not to interrupt your flow.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. I want to thank the board for giving me a few moments to address you. My name is Rabbi Michael Potts. I'm the rabbi of the Mollberg Jewish Center, and I wanted to address the anti-Semitic Snapchat messages that Dr. Hazel raised. I read, I heard about these messages, and I read them on Wednesday, October 8th, just over a week ago, and when I read them, I was truly disgusted. I was appalled. I just thought it was absolutely awful. We know that words matter. Unfortunately, those of us in the Jewish community have learned this a very hard way. We know that, especially when things are posted online, they influence people in real life. And so, in posting these messages, maybe the students didn't realize, but they actually made life for Jewish students in your schools very dangerous, and that's real. We've seen it in the Jewish community, where online messaging translates to violence in real life. It can even be lethal. I appreciate Dr. Hazel, your message that you're taking this seriously, Ms. Bruno, you as well. In our tradition, when something like this happens, a thorough investigation is required. Our tradition teaches us that. I appreciate that you are doing that. In your investigation, you may find that one or more of the teenagers who were involved in this really truly have hatred in their hearts and are truly biased. If that's the case, I think that there should be thorough consequences. In my personal opinion, I don't think there's room in the FRHSD for such students. However, I also want to say that it's possible that one or more of the teenagers didn't fully realize what they were doing, or maybe they didn't speak out and say, "This is, this is not okay." Maybe they just remained silent and have deep regrets about what they did and want to try to find a way to make amends. I'm open to that possibility. In the Jewish tradition, we believe in the possibility of forgiveness. We believe in the possibility of wanting to make yourself a better person. Just two weeks ago, millions of Jewish people around the world stood in their synagogues on Yom Kippur. We prayed together and we asked God for forgiveness for our mistakes. In that spirit, in your investigation, if you do find the latter for some of the teens, again, as I say, I'm only speaking for myself, but I'm open to the possibility of forgiveness if those teens really genuinely understand what they did and want to try to make things Okay, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. These names are difficult. Tara Prapici?
What is the last name, though?
My last name is Prapici.
Okay, I wasn't that close. I wasn't that close.
I'll be quick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. As a parent and a high school senior and a proud Jewish woman, I'd like to urge the school board to adopt a clear and enforceable zero-tolerance policy on antisemitism. It is imperative that the district take a firm stand to ensure students and faculty feel safe, respected, and protected from gate discrimination. Antisemitism is not just a Jewish issue, it's a human rights issue. It's time we stand in solidarity against hatred. Offenders should be expelled. Send them to Raisa Academy. We need to do better to foster a culture of inclusion, education, and accountability. The current way we are evaluating and handling these acts of hatred are over-satisfactory. It's time to reevaluate our policies. Thank you.
We have Howard Norman. Howard. And then we have Beth Conson. Beth. Do you hear Beth? Howard. Come on, Ed was careful for Howard. This is Beth.
Beth Kat Nelson.
I wasn't even trying.
So as a parent and MHS alumni, a community member, the granddaughter of Holocaust survivors, and the national deputy director of the Yad Vashem USA Foundation, I was deeply disturbed and outraged by the recent reports that we've all heard. I would be remiss to sit here silently today. These incidents that took place weren't pranks. They were expressions of hateful and violent ideologies that have no place in our school or community. According to recent surveys by the Anti-Defamation League, only about 54% of Americans know that 6 million Jews were murdered in the Holocaust. Even more alarming, one out of five U.S. young adults believes the Holocaust is a myth. Eighty years later, conspiracy theories continue to spread faster than facts. These statistics are not just numbers. They are a call to action for all of us. To the students involved, you must understand the profound weight and horror behind the symbols and the words that you chose. They're not jokes. They represent hate, suffering, and unimaginable loss for families like mine. They reopen generational wounds. It is all of our responsibility to confront the history and not trivialize it. To the school administration and the Board of Education, your decisive response is essential. Accountability and meaningful consequences must follow. Consequences that go beyond those that are similar for crime like vandalism. They should include educational components that help the students understand the magnitude of their actions and their personal impact on others. Restorative efforts also are critical to begin the healing and the harm and addressing the very real safety concerns that have arisen. Holocaust education, anti-bias training, and programs that connect our students to the human stories behind history are indispensable. I know that some of these initiatives are already in existence. I've attended them personally. I've seen them personally, but while within the same week, a 1940s cattle car replica stood outside Mem's school, and a 3G granddaughter, a Holocaust survivor, shared her family's story with students, this horrific act still happened here in our community. The reality tells us one thing clearly: We're not doing enough, and we're not providing enough interactive accountable follow-up for parents and students. To the community at large, we cannot remain silent. Silence allows hate to grow in the shadows. We must speak up whenever antisemitism or any form of Jew hatred is expressed. Our voices collectively can push back against ignorance, denial, and dehumanization. As someone whose family carries the memory of what hate can do and part of an institution dedicated to preserving truth and memory, I reaffirm our commitment. We will not allow this generation's moral imagination to be stifled by indifference or cruelty. We must respond with education, compassion, and resolve, and we must hope to see that we do hold fast to the values of dignity, respect, and remembrance.
I want to thank everybody for making it short because we have 30 more speakers, so I appreciate it. Steve Roden, Steve Roden. And then next up is Rabbi Rosenthal. Rabbi David Rosenthal. Stephen Rapo. Do you hear Stephen? And then Rabbi Rosenthal will be at this. I'm sorry, everybody ready?
Thanks for letting us speak. My father was a child survivor. His father did not make it, so this hits home for a lot of us. My children shouldn't have to go into high school and feel scared because kids say things on the internet. If this happened to other demographics or other populations, it wouldn't be accepted. If this happened to other demographics or other populations, it wouldn't be accepted. For some reason, against the Jews, it's okay. While I understand and respect that you don't want to give out the children's names by not telling us the punishment, it looks like you're shitting it under the rug. You want to stop other students from doing the same thing or worse if they think that fellow students got no punishment. No, nothing was done to them. We're entitled to know the punishment. I don't want to know their names. I don't need to know that, but we should know that. And lastly, at least for us, we found out through our kids and through Raisa Board. We should be finding this out from you guys or the principal. We should be able to make our decisions.
Rabbi David Rosenthal. Barbara Cohen.
I'll be brief. My name is Rabbi David Rosenthal. I'm a 2004 graduate from Annaphen High School. Actually ran into my 11th grade English teacher, Ms. Santos. I don't remember the Cantabrian tales, but it was really a great year. So as someone who gained a lot from Annaphen High School and is very proud to be an Annaphen High School graduate, I later went on to yeshiva to become a rabbi in Jewish studies. I wasn't going to come originally, but I just wanted to come and take the time to publicly thank the superintendent and the board for taking this so seriously and making us feel that this is being taken care of. Just the one thing that I hadn't heard mentioned was the maybe the role of social media in all of this. I think that TikTok and Snapchat and all of these apps are really making this much, much worse. Stuff doesn't grow in a vacuum. And adults are especially susceptible to this, and especially children that are becoming radicalized when they're getting up. And hate is growing. And if there's something that could be done on a district level, I think that would be very productive as well. Thank you. Grand Central Station, Mr. Bruno? Grand Central Station, Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to go to Howard.
Let's see if we're here, really.
Barbara Cohen? Okay, Barbara. Reg Marazi? Reg and Danielle? Reg and Danielle? You're a couple? We can do two at a time. Come on. Sarah Chrysler, you're up next.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm speaking to you tonight because I feel I have an obligation to represent the voices of the students who are directly targeted by this hateful antisemitic speech. I'm not an activist or a historian. I stand before you what I am first and foremost, a concerned, frightened, and protective parent. And like every parent, our natural instincts are to protect our children. And the truth is, no matter how much we try, we can't always be there to shield them. People will like you. People will dislike you. They will dislike you for reasons they can't even explain. Your nationality, who you love, what God you pray to. That is the reality of humanity. Truthfully, I would have preferred a more gradual introduction to these life lessons for my kid. But we've clearly leapfrogged past all social norms and basic decency. And here we are, talking about vaping gas chamber fumes. Or as one pope bluntly stated about our Jewish children, "Kill every last one of them, please. Kill every last one of them." Personally, I find it hard to concentrate on the Ottoman Empire or Pythagorean theorem when the person sitting next to me has publicly stated, "They want me dead." Maybe that's just me. Before this disgraceful story went viral on all the social media platforms, before the town was ever mentioned in ABC News, this is a true story, my daughter asked me, "Dad, if this ever gets out, what do you think people will think of our town? Will they think it's a bad place to live?" And I quickly said to her, "Of course not, sweetheart." Like, that's not, we're not going to let a few bad apples spoil the bunch. And later that day, I uttered words that my wife will never hear. I was wrong. I explained, I explained, "But now we'll be judged." Not by the hateful words of the few teenagers, but how we, as a community, respond. We will be judged by how we band together, how we show one another compassion, support, how we protect one another, and demonstrate that we will all stand together and eradicate any and all forms of racism, sexism, and religious hatred. That, for you, our children, will take all necessary measures to ensure you grow up safe, respected, and free from fear. It's clear when lines are broached from childhood to ignorance or thoughtful stupidity into explicit threats and calls for violence. When an individual kills all the gays, kills all the blacks, kills all the Jews, we do not shrug. We do not sit idly by and we do not let this be swept under the rug. We take swift decisive action. We will demand accountability. I lost my spot. We will pursue consequences that are appropriate and meaningful in any and all measures required to keep our children safe. We will expel those who spread fear and hate from our classroom. Now, I agree.
Sorry.
Wrap it up? Take the Oscars. Thank you. All right, I was given some time. So I agree that education is essential, but education alone is not enough. When a heart embraces hate, facts and dates won't always reach it. Education must be paired with accountability, clear consequences, restorative steps that these willing to change, and zero tolerance for threats. Teach the lesson and enforce it. Thank you for your time.
As a parent of one of the children that were named a victim...
Just so we have it for the... Danielle, right? No, just picture we had it for the... No problem.
You know, as a parent of one of the children who were named a victim in all of this, I need to demand that something happens because my daughter is sitting home now crying, anxious every day. I just thought, what happened? These children come back to school and my daughter has to sit next to them. Now my daughter is going to be worried and scared every day, and it's going to affect her learning. And that's where I draw a line. That's where things have to change. Thank you.
Sarah Chrysler. I came here tonight prepared with a very carefully written statement, three minutes to the dot, because most of the people here know me and this isn't my first rodeo here. But in valuing everyone's time here and your time here on the board, I really just have one question to ask everyone. I'd like to know who's safeguarding the Jewish children of this district? And how on earth do you expect them to come rested, well-prepared, and ready to learn in an environment where none of them feel safe? Thank you.
Mrs. Shota? Laminah?
Hi, everyone. Here we go again. I was here a year ago. Do you remember me? Yes? I spoke to all of you about a hate crime that happened during graduation last year when the Syrian wore a Hamas scarf, glorifying Hamas. What were we told by the principal of Annaphen High School? He wrote a very nice email, didn't mention antisemitism in it, but he didn't mention diversity and inclusion. What he said was, "This student does not represent us. This student goes against everything that we stand for." Distancing the school from any responsibility for educating this student for four years. And there is nothing we can do. The student already graduated. Right now, we have an opposite situation. We have ninth graders. And what did I hear? And thank you very much, Dr. Hazel. I appreciate your words. You mentioned antisemitism. Thank you. Because if we cannot name the cancer, how are we going to treat it? But what I also heard is that this student or these students have only been here for five weeks. And also, the school is not responsible for them. Because they were taught hate at home. We know where they were taught hate. The question is, what are you going to do about it? That's really my question. Because obviously, whatever you're doing right now is not working. We need real accountability. I had a lot of reservation about demanding these kids to be expelled from school because many Jewish people believe in forgiveness. I mean, most of us do. And I forgive people who are sorry. But the things that they said, this is a deep-rooted hate. And I would be naive to believe that somebody who said those things to kill every last Jew would ever be sorry for them. What I would like for you to do is to treat this as a hate crime, which it is. Right now, I'm speaking to you as a parent, as a Soviet Jew whose parents brought me as a child from Soviet Union to escape antisemitism. And I will tell you that I have never, ever, ever in my life, growing up in Soviet Union, experienced the level of antisemitism the way that my children are experiencing it here. I want you to understand what I'm saying. My children are more afraid than I ever was. And it's up to you to make a difference. I also want to just end with... I have a lot more to say. But I also want to end with... Yes, say no. I also want to add that this community is watching. We're watching what you're going to do very closely. And we know how it works. Thank you for your attention.
Laura Pridey. Laura? And then we have Sebastian Poll. Poll, Sebastian? Laura, you here?
Laura's here, but she's...
Come on, Laura.
She's here for a moment.
Okay. So Laura and Sebastian, you guys are together?
I'm sorry?
You two together?
Well, we have a kind of a team presentation, but let me get started. Freehold Township, yes. My name is Ray Rea, resident of Freehold Township. Lifelong, before that, lifelong resident of Annaphen. It's a hard act to follow, talking about this serious issue that's happening in Annaphen. The words of Board Member Bruno, who we've been lifelong friends, our families. I think Annaphen is in good hands based on her comments. And Jamie, you remember when we were kids, somebody drove a bulldozer into Temple of Ashalom and drew swastikas on the walls. And the community of Annaphen came back from that. And I'm sure that it's going to come back as well. But it's a hard transition to segue into the issue that the Freehold Township soccer team has right now. But let me try to do so. As some of you may know, many of you may not, the Freehold Township Boys varsity soccer team was eliminated or disqualified from the state tournament because of red card accumulation. The last game, their two coaches were red-carded. And we have a number of boys here. Boys, if you can all stand up, show yourselves to the board. Yes?
You got the face, just the word, please.
I will.
You can't hear it, it's okay.
I was just telling them to stand up. You guys can sit back down now. These are boys that I coached, many of them personally. They have worked for this for the better part of their entire lives. And they are now being denied this ability to play, in part because of cautious actions, but also in part because of a mistake. I'm not sure if the board realizes this, but you should realize this, that the gentleman who has the nameplate in front of him, Board Attorney Mark Toscano, is an absolute gem. He and I worked, along with a couple other parents, worked tirelessly to prepare an appeal before the NJSI. And unfortunately, our efforts, in particular Mark's efforts, were not successful. And the Board, the NJSI, ruled against us and failed to consider a number of facts that they should have considered. And so what our plea essentially is, and we have some boys here, we have some parents, some student speakers that want to speak to you about their life experiences. And the plea that we're making is that we do not believe that the road ends here with this appeal that was denied to us. We believe that there are a couple avenues that are still open, and we're asking for the board's help. An appeal to the Commissioner of Education can be made. In addition, we have the ability to litigate this matter. And for those of you who don't remember, a couple of years ago, the Madison Square Boys basketball team had an appeal based on the fact that there was a last-second shot. And it was not private counsel that did that. It was the board. It was the Board of Education. I just researched that pretty extensively. So what we're asking, and I'm going to yield to Rabbi Melchior next, what we're asking is that the Board please continue this litigation on behalf of these young men who have worked their entire lives to get to this point. Thank you.
So can you skip over Sebastian?
Sebastian's here.
Okay, Sebastian. And to you. Okay, Sebastian. I got to keep track.
I'm Gino Casaneda.
Oh, yeah. I'm Sebastian.
Gino Casaneda.
Kane Massey.
I'm Robert Lockhart.
I'm Jaber Morley.
To start off, we would like to say thank you to the board members, the principals, and our community members for helping us come this far. Our hope is still alive because of every single one of you. But we do need your help in the last push, in the last step, to push the litigation further. My name is Gino Casaneda, and I am one of the captains in Freehold Township High School Soccer Team. I've been in the program for four years and I spent the last three playing at the varsity level. I've been playing soccer since I was four. And I've learned with every team how to be resilient. But with this team, it is different. We've worked hard for the last four years to get where we want to be. I don't live in Freehold Township. And coming from Howard my freshman year was one of the scariest things I've ever had to do. But before the school year started, I met my brothers. This team that has become my family and changed me in too many ways to count. We are a team that prays together before every meal and every game. The heart and soul of soccer is within us all, every game, every time we play, and come together as one. We're here to ask you today for help, help for what has been taken from us. We're here to ask you today for help, help for what has been taken from us. Please help us to continue to grow together as brothers. Thank you.
My name is Robert Lockhart. I was four years old when I stepped on the field to play soccer for the first time. Ever since that day, soccer has been my life. I've been playing with some of these boys since before kindergarten. We've played our whole soccer years together. Going from club to club, team to team, school to school, and eventually ending up at Freehold Township High School. Freshman year, our men's soccer team wanted to win a CJ4 championship title. And watching that game from the sidelines, I knew I wanted to fill those shoes as well. I'm not asking for support just for me, so I can fulfill my dreams and aspirations, but I want... but for my brothers. The relationships this program has bought me throughout my four years of being here are something I'll have for a lifetime. I'm not ready for our dreams and aspirations to be cut short. This sport is not just a game, this sport is some people's lives. Hours and hours of devotion and putting in work just to make this moment and have this opportunity to make history. Losing our ability to participate in states wouldn't just be a singular loss, it'd be the end of our dreams we've been after since we were little kids. I'm asking for you to keep letting our dream go and let our run continue. Thank you for your time and consideration.
You're all seniors?
Yeah.
All right, hello. My name is Gabriel Hormelini, and I'm also a senior. I wanna start off by saying that I moved from Brazil in sixth grade with only one goal, which was play college soccer. Me and my family, we came here to seek this opportunity because I know that I can be capable with my teammates to pursue that dream. And since we were all freshmen, we were all watching the varsity team playing states, short conference tournaments. And our last three seasons were not the greatest for our class. And this year, we actually have a very good chance of making a statement, not only for the shore, but for everyone watching the game. And soccer is not just a sport to me, it's something that brings my family together. It's something that brings me closer to people and helps me to socialize. I ask for help because we all have this dream of not only making a run, but also having more time with the teammates that I've been playing since I was little. And I'm not ready for this end. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kane Massey. Thank you for having time to listen. I would like to just start off by saying, I understand that sometimes you don't get what you want, and stuff doesn't go the way you want. But all I'm asking for you guys is just consider it and listen to what we have to say because at the end of the day, it wasn't our fault, it was our coaches. And I don't want to be punished for that. But I'm just honestly not ready to take the jersey off, you know? We've short conference right now, it still means a lot. But at the end of the day, every other team we play, we lose to, they all have states, they all look forward to states. I remember when I was a freshman, watching the seniors, they looked so big to me, they looked so old. They were winning, and they won at our home field. And it was just like magical. I couldn't explain how it felt. And I couldn't wait to do it when I was a senior. And now to get it ripped away from me, it's just, I can't even put into words how it feels. But I understand if you guys would help us, don't help us, that's fine. All I would ask is for you to consider it. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Sebastian Polo. I'm the second captain for the boys soccer team. Soccer has been my first love since I was three years old. It started in recreation ball, moving to club ball in Freehold. And always dreaming of one day stepping onto a field under the lights in a high school state find me. I grew up idolizing the seniors who played in that moment. And I've spent my entire life working for the opportunity to be in their shoes. This year, as captain, that dream felt closer than ever, not just for me, but for my brothers who I lead. Being a captain taught me the full weight of leadership and showing up when it's hard, being a role model on and off the field, and always putting the team above myself. That responsibility has shaped my mentality during this incredibly difficult moment, especially now that I recover from an injury, doing everything that I can to get ready for the first round of states and anything to get back to playing with my boys. This team has fought through adversity all season. We stayed together through every challenge, every doubt, every setback. Soccer has given me more than just a sport. It's given me lifelong relationships, personal growth, and a foundation of discipline and resilience that will carry me beyond the field. To have the chance to play in states has been taken away would be more than just a loss for the game, it would be a loss for a lifelong goal. We are not just asking to play, we're asking to finish where we started and to grow through the lessons, the pressure, and the moment that a state tournament can only offer. Please support us in making that dream a reality. All of our lives, we've trained, learned how to pass, how to shoot, to win and even to lose. For many of us, it might be our last season ever playing this sport that raised us. Everything we've worked for has led to this season, and for it to just be taken away feels like a slap in the face. It would mean the world to us if you pushed through this appeal further to help us achieve our goals. Thank you.
So I heard you say you won a couple of games in the short conference? Two? That's cool. Who'd you be? Sebastian? Good! Rabbi... R- Raisnem? Google? It looks like it's crossed out, but I think Rabbi is still here. Anybody not speak on the subject at this time? Anybody not speak yet?
Is it Rabbi Baruch Hazanah?
Yes, come on up, Rabbi. Did you just hear something in my mic?
My name is Rabbi Baruch Hazanah, and I'm living in this community for thirty-nine and a half years. I want to thank the Board for their time, for everything they do, for the education of the children, you know firsthand, besides running the synagogue with the Vada organization. My wife and I founded the organization, which you might know about, the Friendship Circle, that services over one hundred and twenty-five children. Most of the volunteers, close to two hundred of them, are actually students of yours from ninth to twelfth grade. I wanna reiterate what was said earlier. I don't remember his name. While it's no one's right, might be no one's right to know the names of these students, but if there isn't a clear, clear result of what's gonna happen as a result of it, then all the talking is really in vain. Punishment is not revenge. Punishment is supposed to be deterrence. How are you gonna deter anyone if no one knows what happened to these individuals? And I just wanted to say one point, which I hope you take to heart. All those numbers of the math results, and the science results, and language results are very impressive. But I wanna remind you that the perpetrators of the Holocaust were also very, very well-educated. Actually, if you think about it, their education brought about the worst murder since humanity has ever recorded, any murder. Math, science, and any discipline, which is not founded on morals, is worth nothing. Hitler's doctors, scientists, mathematicians, attorneys, physicians, they were all part of the problem, not the solution. And as educators, and as those that are responsible for the education, I'm not blaming anyone on this Board. I look up to you. You have to understand the responsibility you have for the students that are under your umbrella. So I plead with you. Do whatever you can, not only to punish these students. It's not just about punishing them, it's about setting the record straight that this is not gonna be tolerated. And all the education that was mentioned with the Federation and all these organizations were all good up till now. We're living in a world of social media. One post can do, who knows how much damage? I don't envy you, but you have to put your heads together and figure out, how do we actually, not just talk some props, it's all about cattle cars, gotta do something concrete that every student knows what it means, how every human being is precious in the eyes of God. And that unfortunately, to speak about one and a half million innocent children among six million innocent Jewish people that were just gassed and murdered, to speak in this way is totally, totally unacceptable. Thank you.
I didn't wanna skip... Did I skip anybody? Because some of these names are crossed out. You hear that?
Sharon Chutser.
I thought I stepped up to applause. Oh, I see Sharon. Face to... Then we're done. We can do it.
Can we put in the budget a new stamp?
Yes. I said that an hour ago.
My name is Sharon Chutser. I live at seventy-six West George Street in Freehold Borough. I am here tonight not only as a resident, but as a councilwoman from Freehold Borough. And with me, I have Councilwoman Annette Jordan and Councilman Michael Di Benedetto. On a little bit lighter note to begin, we want to say how proud we are of this young gentleman who is a borough young man for his accomplishments. Thank you, Colton. We're very proud of you. I don't wanna date myself, but I not only watched him grow up, but I watched his mother grow up as well. And we also want to thank, since we're here, take the opportunity to thank Amanda McCob, who is our representative on the Board of Education. We want to often have a chance to thank Amanda for everything she does in the borough. So we want to do that right now. Our main purpose in being here tonight was to thank not only all of the students and the teachers and the schools who participated in these spectacular events, but also to recognize and make sure that everyone knows that that committee works year-round on all the plans for our spectacular events. And all of those folks that you saw here tonight, plus the rest of the committee, are volunteers in the borough. So we wanna thank all of them as well. And please, go into downtown Freehold and see in person this wonderful artwork that these kids have done under the direction of God. I also wanna take this opportunity to highlight something that Superintendent Hazel said when she mentioned some of the programs that are being presented. This might be a good time to congratulate and thank the Alliance to Prevent Substance Abuse, which is a shared committee between Freehold Township and Freehold Borough. And we do pay for many of those programs that are brought into the schools to help combat this kind of thing. And in closing, I just wanna say that we are here and we are condemning the egregious, horrific behavior... This just went off. And I didn't touch a thing. ...that has been described tonight. And we are appalled by this kind of behavior. We are in support of the school district and the school Board. And we want you to know that we are here and ready to help in any way that we can. And I'd like to just close with this. And it's a paraphrase of something that Anne Frank said. She said, "Isn't it..." And a paraphrase. "Isn't it wonderful that we don't have to wait a minute to show kindness to other people?" That's the message we should take out here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I am probably going to reiterate a lot that has been said already tonight. But I cannot ignore what's going on in this district. I have called you, called the Board and the administration to step up when they have misstepped. And I once again, and by the way, you usually don't do anything. And that's what I'm afraid of. You sit there, stick your head. You don't answer anyone, ever. And giving wonderful organizations names, that's great. Hasn't worked. What are you doing tomorrow? Do you know that I feel very sorry for the boys that were kicked off their team or wrestling with the team, whatever. But your education has gone so far that most of them, sitting near them, and I'm sure they're lovely young men, were on their cell phones the entire time, except when someone was at the microphone talking about their team. They didn't care. You have got to do more. As an educator myself, I know unless teachers, administrators, circle a room of students and see what they're doing, they are not listening to your programs. They are ignoring you. Most teachers don't circle. I don't think any administrators, except one, from a previous principal at Marbury High School, Jim Leving, was the only one that I've ever known. You should laugh, you shouldn't laugh because you could take lessons from him. But yeah, then you were very lucky. And it gave him a hard time, too. You have got to step up, open your eyes. Talk is cheap. Talk is cheap. You've done nothing. You waved away graduation and did nothing about the presentation from Palestinians who have every right, but doesn't have a right to criticize other people and make them feel bad. I've told you, year after year, I have been here, gone too many years, as you all know. It's kinda scary when I walk in, everybody says, "Hi, Mrs. Fox." Everyone knows my name, and I've been talking so long, yet nothing gets heard. Do something. I want these students to have on their records, go to the college. I have to know, and I'll probably think of many things afterward. You are so lucky to have Mr. Azateller on this school's board. He's the only damn one, if you're that dare. Sorry for cursing.
It's about your retirement.
Start opening your eyes.
I don't think I missed anyone, did I? Your name, sir?
Thank you.
The phone's all way here.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Werthine. I'm a thirty-eight-year resident of Marlboro. I'm a native of Olomah County. I'm a former president of Congregation Beni Israel in... president of Congregation Beni Israel in Manalaven. A lot has been said today about the vile, despicable, and abhorrent behavior of the four students from Manalaven, but that's only the tip of the iceberg. These students have been impacted by social media, but they've also learned these lessons at home. The consequences of their actions have to fall not just on the students, but on the parents as well. And when you say, kill every last Jew, that's not hate speech, that's lethal violence. I am the son of a refugee from World War II, whose entire family was almost wiped out in one single day. I'm a two G, not a three G. This is serious, this is real, and if you haven't experienced an anti-Semitic attack, then you have not walked in my shoes. So there's talk, there's statements, there are wonderful commentaries, but none of them mean anything without firm action and education which ramps up the current level of education by a factor of ten. There are two countries in this world that mandate every student go through a semester of Holocaust education in order to graduate high school. One is Germany, the other is the Czech Republic. I don't ever expect that to happen here in the United States, but that does not mean that you do not have an obligation to educate not just the children, but the parents. That is critical. Change is here tonight. That's the Holocaust Museum of Brookdale Community College. They have syllabus to give you, for free, that you can use in the classrooms, to make this a constant part of the curriculum in the Freehold Regional District. The US Holocaust Museum does the same, the New York City Holocaust Museum does the same. There are plenty of resources available to this district if you choose to take it. And I won't mind each and every one of you. The famous saying, that evil flourishes when good people do nothing. You can talk all you want, but unless you do, nothing will change.
I switched to a different, I'm Laura Kleitz.
Laura Kleitz?
Laura Kleitz. Right spoke, who switched places? Yes, oh, this will be better. Uh, meeting members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Principals, and Community Members, my name is Laura Kleitz, a parent of Sebastian Polo varsity soccer captain, who spoke earlier. First, I wanna begin by thanking you all for the support you've shown our students, our athletic programs, and our community through this season. And that comes from not just myself, but the parents behind me. Your commitment to providing opportunities for our young athletes to grow, learn, and represent Freehold Township with pride has not gone unnoticed, and we're deeply grateful. I am here tonight though to ask you for your continued support, specifically in backing our appeal to the NJSIAA following the recent ruling that disqualified our boys varsity soccer team from the state tournament. This decision was based on what we strongly believe to be an honest mistake, a misinterpretation of an event that occurred during our match. This was not a matter of poor sportsmanship, violence, or misconduct. It was an administrative and interpretive error that should be corrected and not punished. Our athletes deserve due process, they deserve the same fairness that our education system strives to teach, that truth and integrity matter. This is not only about soccer, it is about standing up for what is right, modeling accountability, and showing our students that their leaders will fight for justice when warranted. Please join us in ensuring that one human error does not erase the entire season of hard work, years of dedication, and pride for our school and our community. Thank you very much.
Ryan Melcher? First of all, I wanna thank the board for the FSA, Mr. Chris Godwin in particular did a great job. The appeal was not lost as a lack of effort for us to give them the appeal. I was one of the parents that worked with him along with Mr. Godwin. I will be very brief, because I don't think there's anything I can say to you that should or would resonate more than what the boys said to you themselves when they spoke on their behalf. You heard from five seniors, there are fifteen seniors on this roster?
Fifteen?
Fifteen seniors, along with another fifteen or so underclassmen. They, you know, I wish you could see these boys in the classroom, and in, on the field, and in the community. This is a great group of kids, they, I can assure you, they are a poster child of the type of athletic team you want representing this district. To have their dreams, of these fifteen seniors, taken away on a technicality, a factual error, is, is just an injustice. So, so I would be brief, just wanna reiterate, thank you for so far, and we are here to urge you and plead that you assist them in their appeal to the commissioner and any further action, Mr. Godwin.
Their next game is when?
Uh, their next regular game is Saturday, their next tour conference game is Monday, and the state tournament, I believe the seedings are on October twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very proud principal, I'm very, very proud of them. Your name sir?
Tom Cucciaro.
Dave Farro.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The Kids Encyclopedia's definition on antisemitism is a strong dislike or prejudice against Jewish people. It means treating Jewish people unfairly or hating them just because they are Jewish. This is, this kinda hatred has been around for a very long time. Kids Britannica states Jewish people have been discriminated against for more than two-thousand years, often it has been because of their religious beliefs. In ancient times, some people worship many gods. They did not trust the Jewish people because the Jews did not follow the same gods. The Jewish people worship only one god. Now, I appreciate your statement, Dr. Hazel, and Mr. Bruno, and the commitment to educate our students in the fight against antisemitism, but it seems like it still may not be enough. And the focus may need to shift to educating the parents. Hatred starts at home. There are fifteen-point-eight million Jews in the world today, that's zero-point-two percent of the world population, not even one percent of the world population, yet there's people out there that put so much thought and effort into hatings. Make it make sense, 'cause I can. Of the nine-hundred-and-sixty-five individual recipients of the Nobel Prize between nineteen-oh-one and nineteen, and two thousand and twenty-five, at least two-hundred-and-twenty of them have been Jews, representing twenty-two percent of all recipients, meaning the share of winners is a hundred-and-ten times their proportion of the world's population. It's time to stop hating and start saying thank you. A handful of amazing things Jewish people have contributed for the entire world to benefit from. The ballpoint pen, the instant camera, the teddy bear, mobile phones, camera phones, Google, stainless steel, the polio vaccine, the way he's driving at it. The hate needs to stop, and while the district may already be providing what it feels like adequate amount of Holocaust and hate prevention instruction, it's clearly not enough. I hope this board and school district take a zero tolerance policy against any future incident that resemble what just happened. Thank you.
Sorry, I just, you don't like to show your name, just so they have the minutes.
Tom Cucciaro. Good evening and thank you for allowing me to address the board. My name's Tom Cucciaro, and I'm a New Jersey dealer for Next Gen Roofing and Solar. We provide no-cost solar systems to schools, churches, and nonprofits. We are one of the oldest solar companies in America, and we've installed over three-hundred systems in the last twelve years. We are veteran-owned, and only state-of-the-art products that are American-made. Tonight, I'm very excited to offer solar to the district with no upfront and zero out-of-pocket expense. This is a great way for your organization to go green, saving you millions of dollars, all while reducing your carbon footprint. We will lower your per kilowatt rate considerably and lock that rate in for twenty-five years, saving you literally millions of dollars in electricity costs. Just imagine how much good you could do with those reallocated funds in other more important areas of the district. Our service has completely turned key.
Shame on you!
Shame on you?
Yeah.
She's right, she's right, she's right.
Excuse me, one sec, one sec, excuse me. Everybody has the right to speak. It is public comment, we don't tolerate shouting. We're all gonna be civil to each other? Please, we're almost finished, we're almost there. Our service has completely turned key, which means we will design the system, we'll install the system, we'll handle the permitting, the inspections, the construction and maintenance of the systems. We will also ensure and monitor the systems. We will send a crew to inspect and clean the systems biannually to ensure their optimal performance. The only expense you will ever have is a lower electric bill. The only requirement we have is that you provide us with an electric bill for each meter, or give us permission to access those bills, so that our engineers can analyze them to determine system sizes. With your permission, I would love to provide a free, no-obligation proposal for you, if you feel this may be a good fit for the district.
I'll take ten.
Thank you. Thank you everybody for being patient. We'll move on with the board meeting. May I have a motion to approve items G one?
Motion.
One sec, one sec. G one to K one.
G one to K two.
Second.
Any discussion board? No discussion? No, I hear you, discussion hold on. Excuse me, motion is G one to K two, with the position of G twenty-two. Mr. Tull?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno? This is cap yellow. This is Busher Parkus? Mrs. Higley? Thank you. Mrs. Flavin? Mrs. McCall? Mrs. Messigan? Ms. Bruno? Thank you. Any board members have all positions discussed? No all positions board? Any new positions board?
I do, I just, I'll try to be relatively quick. First of all, I had the opportunity to go to the marching band festival on Tuesday, and of course I was not able to stay for the entire thing, but what I was able to be there for was fantastic, and I want to congratulate all the students and thank all of the band's teachers and assistant directors and everything, color guard teams and everything like that, they did a wonderful job. Also, congratulations to the winners of the spectacular painting contest, the teachers as well for fostering the art within the schools, 'cause that is of course very important. I just wanna note that there is a trunk or treat that I play in America next Friday, the twenty-fourth, and the Freehold Borough's spectacular parade is Sunday, the twenty-sixth, one o'clock, I believe, one o'clock. So please come out and support the schools, who will be in attendance, and the kids, and just have a good time getting all the fun.
Thank you. I just wanna congratulate the Manalaven Boys Cross Country for winning the county championship on Tuesday. Any one other new business?
Yeah, I just wanna thank Jewish people who came out and spoke tonight, the young men, and also, you know, all the other people who came out, but, you know, we do listen, and I appreciate getting the feedback that we get from the community.
Okay, no more new business? May I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.